Okay, this meeting of the city council is called to order. Madam Recorder, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Studebaker.
Here.
Councillor Wendland.
Here.
Manz.
Here.
Koha.
Here.
O'Neil.
Here.
Winn.
Here.
And Lamont.
Here.
And joining us also at the meeting today is Martha Bennett, City Manager, David Powell, City Attorney, Anne Marie Simpson, City Reporter, Megan Phelan, Assistant City Manager, Paul Espy, Associate Planner, Scott Segal, Planning and Building Services Director, Katie Kirkland, Citizen Information Specialist, and Dale Jorgensen, Police Chief.
This is now the time for citizen comment. Have you, Ms. Simpson, have you received any requests for citizen comment?
No, Mayor, we have no request for comment this afternoon.
Okay, then we'll continue on. First order of council business is annexations. Mr. Espy, are you going to give us some information on these four?
I'd be more than happy to.
All right, proceed.
Okay, Mayor Studebaker, members of the council, I've provided maps of properties. And let me first of all, bring up my PowerPoint here.
Just for point of interest, Mr. Powell, these do not require a public hearing, do they?
No, it does not require a public hearing there. And it is expedited proceeding to Metro Code, there'd be no public hearing announcements then, however, I would ask, since it is quasi judicial, if any city council members want to make a declaration with relation to ex parte contacts bias or conflicts of interest.
Madam Simpson, would you ask each one, please?
Yes, I will. Mayor Studebaker.
No.
Councillor Wendland.
I know.
Manz.
No.
Koha.
No.
O'Neil.
No.
Winn.
No.
And Lamont.
No.
All right, thank you. Mr. Espy, go ahead then.
Thank you, Mayor Studebaker, members of the council. I provided maps on properties proposed for annexation and include the location of the sanitary sewer facilities. These annexations are being reviewed, as previously stated, as expedited annexations provided under Metro Code 30904, 5A through E. And before I get started, staff received four letters from the Fair Housing Council of Oregon on these proposed annexations yesterday afternoon, and the letter state that the reports for these annexations do not adequately address goal ten. And they felt that more detail is needed on the housing type and affordability, and they also state that the findings need to demonstrate that the proposed zone changes provide city adequate residential land supplies in the types and locations and affordability ranges. Our response to that is that the city is essentially a one map system where zones are applied consistent or matching the land use designations in the city's goal ten metro housing rule compliant comprehensive plan. So our comprehensive plan already complies and has done all the analysis of the goal ten metro housing requirements. And we note that some jurisdictions have more options to consider when annexing lots and designating zones. For example, a comprehensive plan designation of low density could correspond to any particular low density area within our 7.5, our 10, our 15, or whatever zoning designation they might have. The city, in contrast, provides specific zoning designations on the comprehensive plan map, and unless the city proposes to amend the comp plan to change those designations, we don't need to evaluate the proposed zone changes against the housing needs analysis in the staff report. We merely apply the comprehensive plan and its contents. So in doing that, the city relies on LOC 5001 045A, which is the implementation language that states that the Lake Oswego Comprehensive Plan Map provides for the future city zoning of all the property within the city's urban services boundary. And in cases where the comprehensive plan map requires a specific zoning map designation, this designation is automatically imposed on the territory when the property is annexed to the city. Statewide goal or goal ten coincides with the complete neighborhood section of the comprehensive plan, of our comprehensive plan, and where all those issues are raised, where all those issues in the letter from the Fair Housing Council are addressed. This section provides the analysis that thoroughly addresses the issues raised in the letter and provides the appropriate comprehensive plan designations for those lands designated for higher or low density high housing. Relying on this analysis, these designations are merely carried over at the time of the annexation, as stated in the code. And since adequate findings are made in the comprehensive plan to establish these designations at the outset, staff doesn't find it necessary to repeat the same detailed analysis in the annexation report. With that being said, staff is providing findings that replace the existing goal ten findings in the staff report for council's consideration this afternoon, and these clarify the reference to the analysis found in the complete neighborhood section in the comprehensive plan. We just want to make sure that we have an ironclad and clear reference to that plan. So without anything further, I'll go ahead and briefly discuss the proposed annexations, if there are no questions at this juncture. Okay, so this property is located at 4688 Oak Ridge Road. It's approximately 20,000 square feet and will be zoned R 7.5. Sanitary sewer is available from a 10-inch Lake Oswego sanitary line in Oak Ridge Road. Moving to 13962 Nos Road, this property is located, is in this location, it will be zoned R 15 upon annexation, and the RP designation on this property will be removed. For your viewing convenience, I just went ahead and included the map just to show you where the actual RP resource is designated on the property that will actually be removed. Sanitary sewer service is available from a manhole located at the South Propri Line. Other properties in the future will need to extend the sewer from the manhole near the intersection of Nos Road and Country Club Roads right here. This property is located at 16317 Bonner Avenue. It'll be zoned R 7.5 upon annexation. And a sanitary sewer service line is now available adjacent to the property, which was recently constructed as a part of two recent land partitions in 2017, and be extended to provide sanitary sewer service to these properties. And finally, this property is located at 555 Child's Court. It will be zoned R 10 upon annexation. And sanitary sewer service is available in Child's Road. That finds that the properties that are being considered for annexation are within the urban services boundary and that the annexation is timely with regards to the public facilities and recommends approval of these four annexations. I'm open for any questions you may have.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the four annexations brought to us by staff. Second.
Would that motion be, I don't think anyone's talking, I apologize, to adopt the court ordinances 2842, 43, 44, and 45, and also with the accompanying findings substituting the substitute language for the goal ten section as recommended by staff?
Yes. My motion.
Mr. Espy, will you take down the PowerPoint so we can see?
Sure can, yeah.
Thank you.
Attorney Powell, yes, that would be the full motion. Right.
Okay, thanks. Does anybody have any questions? Anybody have any discussion they want to enter on this?
No, sir.
Hearing done. Will you call the roll, please, Ms. Simpson?
Yes, Mayor Studebaker.
Yes.
Wendland.
Yes.
Manz.
Yes.
Koha.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Winn.
Yes.
And Lamont.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Okay. I'd like to take item 4.6, which is the meeting minutes first, before we get into briefing on the situations here. So I'm going to make a motion that we approve meeting minutes for the April 9th and April 13 special meetings.
Second.
Anybody have any discussion? Okay. Hearing done, let's take a vote.
Mayor Studebaker.
Yes.
Councillors Wendland.
Yes.
Manz.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Koha.
Yes.
Winn.
Yes.
And Lamont.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Okay, now, City Manager Bennett, can you get us started on this discussion?
You bet. And you should all know that both David Powell and I have noticed that in the middle of the day, city Wi-Fi doesn't work so great, so if I cut in and out, I apologize. We're going to start with Scott Segal, who's going to give you a quick update on the business, small business assistance loans or grants, sorry, then to Chief Jorgensen, who's going to talk about law enforcement related activity, and then to Katie for our communications. So with that, Scott, can you take it from here?
Yeah, thank you, Mark. Good afternoon, Mayor, City, under the City Council. The Business Assistance Grant Program is one of the components of the Business Assistance Program that the City Council reviewed and provided staff direction on at the beginning of April. And the direction was to develop and implement Business Assistance Grant Program that would be aimed at assisting Lake Oswego's small businesses during the COVID-19 crisis, and to provide a grant program that would be flexible so that businesses, whether they were currently prohibited from operating or were operating under restrictions, or simply been impacted in a severe way by the drop in business, that the grant program would allow them to meet their payroll obligations, pay rent, cover any number of business expenses in the interim while they're waiting for assistance from the federal government. And I'd like to report that we were successful in launching that program. We had a great team with communications group, led by Katie, Finance Department Brad and Sean, and all the host people, including Citizens Support Center at the library, getting the word out to businesses, answering questions, and including staff and the planning department. We released the grant program on schedule. There was advertising and media announcements that went out first week in April, so immediately after recording due, council, we provided information about the grant program to the public. It was posted online. The guidelines and application requirements were made available, and the Chamber of Commerce is really instrumental in getting the word out, not only to their members, but other businesses in the community that subscribe to their list serve. So a real partnership between the Chamber and the city. The grant program opened. We posted the information on Wednesday, the 8th, and announced that grants would be, we would begin receiving grants at nine o'clock on Thursday at night. We opened that on time, on schedule, and the staff report says that within three hours we'd received over 180 applications. That's actually, need to clarify that, we received a total of 180 applications between nine o'clock that morning and five o'clock in the afternoon when the process was closed. We did receive, within the first three hours, a sufficient number of applications that, at that point, we had already, in retrospect, having reviewed the applications, what we found is that the applications that amounted to a quarter of a million dollars, we had already received by 11:30 that morning. So it was a very quick and rapid response from the city and from the community, obviously. There were many more needs than the city could fulfill, and we knew that going into this. So what we really wanted to do is to provide a level playing field, to provide accurate and consistent information to communities, so people knew what to expect, and they had time to prepare and collect the materials that they would need to apply. The most pressing need for funding was to pay rent, payroll, and other operating expenses. In addition to the decrease in business or the elimination of all income altogether, businesses noted the increased costs that they're facing, including increased overhead costs relating to human resources or technology for those that are able to continue operating, as we've discovered as an organization, businesses too are finding that they have increased costs to operate. They've also had to take time to apply for federal assistance that we wouldn't ordinarily be doing, and as we understand, there's still, many businesses are still waiting for that assistance. The other highlights that I would note, we did provide 119 grant award offers, and I say offers because as of Monday, we had heard back from all but, I think, six or seven awardees. So over 90% had responded and accepted the awards. There were some provisions that they had to agree to, that, you know, the funds would be used for business expenses, and receipts or other documentation of those expenses in the next 90 days. They were able to apply the grant toward expenses that they had incurred as of March 8th, and that was the date of the governor's emergency declaration. And with that, we received replies back from all but one so far that accepted. One that chose not to said that graciously they declined it, and they said that they no longer needed funds. It may have been a situation where they had recently sold the business or had other circumstances that they didn't feel that it was appropriate to accept the award. We did award grants in the amount, in an amount exceeding the $250,000 budget, and a couple of reasons for that. We had the initial award list. We came in just a little bit over that, and it was just a function of the way the grant awards lined up. So there were awards of $1,000 for businesses with one employee, and there were awards of $2,500 for businesses with more than one employee. So the initial grant list, the way it sorted, and it was based on first come, first served, so the time, date, stamp that received the application, we had one grant at the very end of that list that was $2,500, so bumped the total over $250,000 by about, by $1,500. And then what we found about following week, what we discovered, and one of the businesses, one of the businesses brought this to our attention, is that they had submitted, this particular business had submitted multiple applications, and they were all denied. And what we found in reviewing the file was that they did actually meet the criteria for one of the requests, and so an award was made, they had submitted in a timely manner, and that increased the amount to what's shown in the staff report at $254,000. And now, having received the one declining, the one business that declined the grant award offer, we're back down to $251,500. So I just wanted to point that out to the council. So finally, in conclusion, I'd just say that the program was well received. The businesses were very grateful, and they, I think we were effective in reaching the, sort of, the target. So what I can do here, just real quickly, is share my screen so you can see, or whoever Publix viewing this, I can see how this broke out. So we, we were really trying to reach small businesses in Lake Oswego, and as you can see here, 70, or just, just over, or almost 60% of those businesses were employing only one, or less than five employees. So less than five employees comprise 70 of the grant awards, and the largest employer was 29 employees, and I believe that was a restaurant. It's a little larger. So that's how it broke out on the businesses by employment, businesses by subarea. We covered every commercial district of the city. So you see here in this area, this is downtown, in the blue, Lake Grove, and orange, Cruzway, and gray, and that includes the Bangy Road corridor, that portion that's inside the city. And the Goldenrod area here are the neighborhood centers. So even the smallest neighborhood, commercial areas had businesses, we saw businesses applying from those areas, from Mountain Park to small neighborhood, commercial corner at Lakeview and Bryant, to McVeigh and South Shore, and other neighborhood centers. Green area here is the southwest employment area. So we had some of our light industrial uses and businesses, bakeries, just a whole host of businesses in each of those areas. And then finally, on my business type, this just shows you the diversity of businesses in all, really every economic sector in Lake Oswego. Businesses are being impacted or have real difficulties in maintaining their operation or even, you know, trying to prepare to come back when the restrictions are lifted. So of course, the largest sector here, you can see, is personal services, so everything from the salons and spas that are currently shut down by the governor's order, to massage therapists, to dance studios, to martial arts businesses, you know, all the personal services that we have in Lake Oswego that serve residents, community, business services as well. And the next largest sector here, here's the medical, or medical and retail are both comparable, eating and drinking establishments as well. And then the breakdown is showing the other sectors. And that concludes the staff report, and glad to answer any questions.
Questions, anybody? Questions, Councillor Lamont?
Scott, and Katie, and Director Cross, and the whole team, this was outstanding work in a short, short timeframe, and kudos all the way around. It was an excellent plan. A state official I talked to a couple of days ago had heard about it and was just like amazed that not only that we as a city did it, but we did it so quickly and cleanly. So thank you all, that was great.
Councillor Manz, do you have a question?
I do, I do. And I echo what Councillor Lamont said. I've heard from folks in the small business community, and their socks were blown off at how well this program went, how quickly it went, how fair it was. My question, and this is simply for my own edification, medical, is that dentists, doctors, other small medical businesses, or? I haven't had that in my head for some reason.
Yes, Councillor Manz, it is all of the above, and we did see a good, a large number of dentists, licensed massage therapists, eye, you know, laser eye surgeons and others either due to the governor's order or not permitted to operate, or are only allowed to operate for essential or emergency purposes, or have just seen business drop off. And, you know, the only qualitative part about this whole process was asking the businesses how, how the pandemic has affected their business, how have they been impacted in a negative way, and what would the funds be used for? Those were the only qualitative aspects of this process. And I have to say, I was a little nervous going into this, we would be looking at it, and staff would be having to make some subjective decisions, but there was really no question. I mean, looking at the narratives and the real hardships that people are facing, there was no question that these businesses have had to lay off people, some are not knowing how they're going to pay rent. It's, we hope that we never have to do this again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam City Manager? You need to move, there you go.
Yeah, no, no, I got it. It's just, as I say, there's a little tiny hiccup in the, in the Wi-Fi here in City Hall this afternoon, too many people on Wi-Fi. So I think we'll turn it over to Dale now and have him talk about sort of how it's gone from a law enforcement perspective. I know some of you have had questions about what kinds of incidents are we seeing, and are we getting complaints about folks who are not following social distancing, and who better to answer those questions than Dale himself?
Well, thank you. And thank you, Mayor and Council, for taking the time to listen to this little update. Before we get started, there are a couple of things I do want to say before we get started. And first is a thank you to the council for your support, or the support you've not only given the department, but actually the entire city staff, as we've negotiated these really uncharted times that we're living through. Your words of encouragement, your videos, all that things really means a lot to not only our department, but to the city staff and, and the community. I also want to say thanks to the community. I can't tell you how many notes of appreciation, encouraging words, emails, pictures. Our officers will be driving down the street and somebody will hand them, with proper social distancing, I'm hoping, a note of encouragement, and that's really special, and it kind of sets our community apart for, for other people. And the notes aren't for just the police department, they're for all of our first responders. And I think oftentimes, we forget just how big that first responder network is in this, this time of crisis, if we could use that word. So on behalf of the members of the police department, I want to say thanks to both you as a council and to our community for the support. Secondly, I think I'd be really remiss if I didn't thank the members of our police department publicly, who have adapted to the ever-changing world of COVID-19 that we're living through for the, at least the past six weeks, and in some cases, eight weeks. Our officers have really had to change the way we deliver service, and we're always mindful of that commitment to deliver that quality service. But, you know, it's not just our officers that have been delivering this service, it's also a lot of our support staff that kind of works behind the scene, our records department, who still comes into work every day and still processes all the police reports that we, by the way, are still taking, and our admin staff who pays the bills and do things like that up here in the police department. And then, of course, our locom, our dispatchers, who last week, we recognized during National Dispatcher Week, but who really are the critical piece in our city to make sure we get those, those services delivered, not only for the police department, but really for the fire department and for public courts in a lot of cases after hours. So I really want to thank publicly our department for all the work that they've put through. Lastly, and this is going way off script, but I did get Megan's permission to talk about this. This virus has changed much in our lives. However, we still are moving forward. And before all the lockdowns and social distancing came about, Captain Scott Thran announced his retirement from our department, effective at the end of this month. And Captain Thran has worked for our department for over 25 years. During that time, he worked in patrol and detectives, he was a patrol sergeant, he was both a traffic lieutenant and a patrol lieutenant, and for the last two years, he was our captain. And, you know, normally, we have some sort of city function where we get together and we can meet and say thank you. Obviously, that can't happen. And so I wanted to make sure that I publicly thanked Scott for his 25-plus years. I know I'll miss him. He is, he's been a rock-solid person for the last two years, and really for the last 25-plus years. But I wanted to wish him well in his retirement. With his retirement, we made a move, and Clayton Simon, who many of you know as a previous traffic lieutenant, has been selected to fill Scott's shoes, and I know Clayton will do a fabulous- And I know Clayton will do a fabulous job as captain. And with that, that's kind of my preamble to getting into some other things that I think you might find interesting. So I have some numbers that I wanted to share. And the first one is, as you know, our department has started to deliver prescriptions to some of our community members that maybe be a little bit more at risk of catching the virus. And so we've been doing it for about three weeks. And as of yesterday, we've delivered over 65 prescriptions to those high-risk individuals. This program has been very well received. We've gotten notes. Obviously, we kind of modeled our program after Forest Grove's program. And I wanted to shout out to them because they're really the ones that started it. But this program has been very well received in our community. And really, from what I can tell, has been really embraced. And we're probably doing record business. I don't know how the other departments are doing, but that's a pretty good clip if you look at the three weeks we've been doing. Also, I wanted to share with you some other numbers. And these numbers are for the entire month of March and for the first two weeks of April. And they compare 2019 to 2020, so the same time period a year ago. And we track calls a couple of different ways. But given the current situation that we're under, I decided that probably the best way to kind of share with you what we're doing is calls for service, which are those calls that somebody calls locom and says, I need a police officer. And then the other call is what we call self-initiated calls. Self-initiated calls are traffic stops, those things that the officer finds on themselves to do. So kind of that self-initiation. And it was interesting when we started to go through and look at those. So since we've been in our lockdown, we've actually seen a 6% increase in our calls for service. So that was sort of surprising in a way, maybe not as much as some other calls. But that was a little bit surprising to see that our calls have actually increased. Our calls into locom have actually increased. And a big shout out to the Citizen Call Center because as of our meeting on Monday, they've taken over 300 calls that would have come into locom. But the Citizen Information Center has been taking a lot of those calls. So it's taken the pressure off locom. So although our call volume has gone up a little bit, they're typically police-related or fire-related or medical-related calls that we have to. We've seen about a 45% decrease in self-initiated calls. So part of that is the fact that our traffic, our traffic patterns have changed, obviously. There's not as much traffic coming into the city. That's where most of our self-initiated calls stem from, our traffic violations and doing traffic on cars. Now, that isn't to say that we're still not pulling cars over. And I'm sure you've seen from both our city's comm team, who did a fabulous job in making sure that they got the message out and other law enforcement entities in the area about how the rise in speed through the cities, on the freeway, on the surface roads have really gone through the roof. Our officers are still pulling over cars that are egregious in those speeding and you know, disregarding traffic control devices and those things. And really, what we've seen is a noticeable increase in citations for speeding 20 miles an hour and over the posted speed. I think, I think we've seen the high was about over, over 65 on Boones Ferry is I think the high that we saw. And the speed on Boones Ferry, we know is 40. So we are still out enforcing the law. We're still out enforcing speeding. We might, you know, not be quite doing the same number that we did a year ago, but we're getting the most egregious. The following numbers are some specific calls for service that I thought you might be interested in. And there's been some communication about these calls in the past. So we've seen a 73% increase in domestic disturbance calls. So obviously, more people at home, not getting out. And so that's kind of one of those increases that although is disturbing, I'm not altogether surprising when you look at the length that this has gone on for. We've also seen an 18% increase in general disturbance calls. So this would be classified as maybe neighborhood disturbances or those type of things. Some great news is that we've seen a 25% decrease in suicide threats and attempts. And that's been really good news in this time. I know some communities are struggling with that particular aspect and they've actually seen increases in those. And then I know that there was a question asked last time we met about our PPE inventory and how we're doing. I will let you know that we track our inventory and usage of our PPP EPE equipment multiple times a week. And we are currently in good shape. And we work in conjunction with both the fire department and our public works department to make sure we balance inventories and share what we have. And I think we're going to have adequate supplies, given what we have and what we're slated to get to see us through. On a side note, I also share that information with some other police chiefs in Clackamas County. And we're able to kind of balance our inventories if we get to that critical point where we're afraid that one of us are. Lastly, the really good news is that we, meaning our department, is healthy. Everybody is at work healthy. We have good protocols in place to try and keep us healthy and to try and keep our community. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Councilor Manz?
Yes, two questions. Any thoughts around why we're seeing such a large decrease in suicide when, as you pointed out, many other municipalities have seen a very sharp increase?
Well, I think one of the things is I think people are more aware. So I'm going to go back a few years. We started as a community, really address the suicide attempts and threats a couple of years ago, more than that, three or four years ago. And yeah, and I think that education and then spring forward to where we are currently, there's been a lot of awareness put out when this all started to hit. Some from our own comms team here in the city about resources and making sure that people connect with those resources. So I think that that has made an impact for why we have seen that decrease in our community.
That's fabulous. Second question is, I've had calls, and this may be that people are ready to go out and begin living their life. And I'm not going to mention specific restaurants or locales, but saying that they have witness gathering at this particular locale and have called the police or have called the community service number. And whoever it is that is doing this, and again, I'm not going to call anybody out because I didn't witness it, is continuing to do this. So there was some frustration and confusion amongst other small business owners as to whether they could go ahead and put chairs out and start serving food or if we're still under takeout only. What can we do? And this may be more directed to something that Katie's, I just pointed at Katie, that Katie's going to speak to later. But I did want to bring it to this attention, to somebody's attention.
So Counselor, I can partially answer that. So we have gotten some of those calls about restaurants having tables outside. And we've actually gone and contacted some of those restaurants and contacted the landlords of those restaurants. And those tables were taken down. And it wasn't that the restaurants were necessarily serving. It's just that they had the tables out there so people would get their food to go and then sit down and eat. So those tables have been removed when we have found out about them. And yes, you're correct, the governor's executive order does bar restaurants from serving food or having a place to sit down and eat after you've gotten your takeout order. So when those complaints come to us, we immediately go and check out and see if those tables have been removed. And to my knowledge, the two that I'm thinking about, both were taken by the landlord and the tables were stored away. Now, with that said, there's a couple of different venues that we have that we can work with. Like I said, we always like to educate people, excuse me. And our education with those restaurants that I just mentioned went very, very well. They didn't realize that that's what was happening and they were more than happy to comply. When they don't comply, what our direction actually from the governor has been, because they found that that's the easiest and quickest way to handle it, is to let the regulatory agency that is over those restaurants. So if they have an OLCC license, we contact OLCC and send them a report. And then OLCC takes care of making that contact. If it's a barber, then it goes to the cosmetology, you know, board. If it's somebody else and it goes to a different board. So the Citizen Information Center has that information. And that's where they're kind of directing it. If we get involved, then we'll write a report and forward it to that regulatory body.
Perfect, thank you.
Councilor Manz?
Well, and as the weather gets better and this quarantine stays longer, I think we're going to see more of the people getting out and just want to mingle and have a picnic and whatever. So I think those are good points. One question I had was on the domestic violence. That shot up quite a bit. What is it, are we talking tens, hundreds?
Oh, no.
It is a pretty small numbers?
Yeah, it's a fairly, so I'm trying to remember the actual numbers. 19 last year, 33 this year, I think is the number, if that's 76%. So it's not, I mean, one's too many. But it's not thousands and thousands. And again, our comms team, I can't remember the exact sequence, but our comms team also put out a really good resource for domestic violence and those type of things. So again, they're kind of detailing that.
Councilor Lamont?
I would just like to say in general, I want to thank fellow counselors and our city manager for everybody sharing ideas, facts, figures, articles, new ideas. And especially shout out to Counselor Wenland for sharing the Forest Grove Police Program with our police and our council. Is that just quickly multiplied and then your follow-up was great. So thank you, John and Dale.
We always like good ideas. Thank you, Counselor Wenland.
What about the other five ideas? No, I'm just kidding.
Anything more, Chief Chardison?
No, that's all I had.
Thank you very much.
All right. Yeah, so I think now I'll have, it's been a week or so since we've had an update from Katie. So we'll have a quick update from Katie and then answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thanks Martha. Good afternoon, Mayor, Studebaker and counselors. Thanks for having me again. Last time I updated you was a few weeks ago. So since then, our team has continued to be pretty busy with sharing messages and getting information out. We have developed content and placed advertising in the Lake Oswego Review. Last week, we had some general public safety messaging. And then this week, we had parks and library online resources available. We did share Counselor Wen, Counselor Manz and Wenland's video messages on the city's website, YouTube and across social media. Thank you all for providing those and sending them in and working with us to get those out. Counselor O'Neil will be our final video and his is planned for release this Thursday. The videos have also been included in the weekly recap newsletters that go out on Friday, on Nextdoor, the Council Digest and in the email, the lowdown, the city's lowdown. We supported the business assistance team in developing content and launching the grant program, as Scott mentioned, along with the continual promotion and compilation of our Open for Business list, which is housed on the city's website. And we're continuing to promote that pretty consistently on social media and through our emails as well and on the city's website. We did develop and launch the Gift Card for Good program, which was in partnership with the Lake Oswego Review and the Hunger Fighters Local Food Bank. So we're encouraging people to collect and purchase gift cards to donate those to local businesses, particularly local restaurants that are open. And they can drop those off at the City Hall utility box at the back of City Hall. And then Hunger Fighters, we'll give those over, send those over to Hunger Fighters and they will then distribute to local families in need. We did also support the Utility Assistance Team in developing content and launching the Utility Assistance Program donations late last week. We popped that on the website, shared it on social media in our e-newsletter. And the Lake Oswego Review also had it in an ad. We launched our weekly staff video and collage program, sharing images and videos of many of our behind-the-scenes staff that are still providing essential services. So reminding folks that we're still here, hard at work, so that people can stay home and stay safe. Today, we've had two videos released. It was Martha's last, late weekend, or sorry, last week was Caitlin Meisner from locom, one of our emergency dispatchers. And that was in the same week as the National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. And then this week will be one of our water treatment plant operators. So that'll be on Friday. And then same with the collage for the treatment plant on Friday, as well as locoms last week. We continue to support Parks and Rec and our library by sharing their virtual programming and events. You'll recall the Camp in Place event was a couple of weeks ago, which was really successful. We also, last week, we had a sidewalk happy hour event on Friday when it was really nice weather. We had also the library Thursday trivia promotion and online resources this week's library week. So we'll be sharing quite a few messages that the libraries getting out as well. We continue to support police and fire in public safety messaging and sharing information as needed. In the last four weeks, I know Dale mentioned that the CIC, our Citizen Information Center, has responded to more than 300 calls in just the last four weeks and 45 emails. The busiest days I think they had were when the business assistance applications went live. As for our main messaging for social media, over the last week or so, we've had the call for donations for the temporary utility assistance program. Fire Department actually asked us to send a call to action out last week for homemade mask donations for people who are living in our assisted living facilities. So we did share a time lapse video of one of our Lake Oswego residents making masks. And we got some really great responses. I'm not sure if Dale can add anything on how many masks we actually received, but I think there was quite a substantial amount from community members. So thank you to the community members who have stepped up to donate those. We also have been sharing tips about, you know, enjoying the sun, but safely, staying six feet apart, so the continuing those physical distancing messages. And our Open for Business list, we did have an inclusivity and a kindness message last week. I think we'll continue to share those as well as our gift card program launching. And we continue to work with PD on sharing their prescription pickup reminders and then public safety messages in general. Earlier this week, we did send out a message about tap water still being safe to drink. There has been, you know, some concerns from some people that are thinking that it hasn't been. Um, there has been, you know, some, some concerns from some people that have, um, thinking that it, that it hasn't been safe. But we've been reiterating those messages and working with our regional water providers consortium to, to reiterate that message. Um, and I mentioned library week, um, is this week. So as far as actions for the next period, um, tomorrow, we will actually have, um, the Lake Oswego Review ad will be, uh, some grocery shopping tips. And next week we plan to share some information about donations. So, um, the utility assist, including the utility assistance program, the, um, gift cards for good and then, uh, meals on wheels program. This week we've got, uh, Earth Days tomorrow. So we'll be working with parks on getting some messages out about, um, Earth Day promoting some activities for kids. We're also sharing, um, our street sweeper naming contacts, tech contest from Public Works, which is, um, underway this month. And then later this week, I mentioned counselor O'Neal's video, uh, the library trivia promotion. And I'll be working with, um, Tom Hammond in, in, um, police to do, get some messaging out about child abuse awareness and domestic violence messages again, um, along with the treatment plant, um, messaging and videos on Friday. Um, as far as other things, we do continue to video conference with the cross department team to strategize messaging and needs. Uh, so that's made up of our, um, small core group. And then we also have representatives from public safety, from library, um, and also Parks and Rec, um, and then our, our core team as well. Uh, we continue to support the Business Assistance Task Force, the Utility Assistance Group, and then the Gift Card for Good. And we'll be sharing, um, our newsletter on Fridays as well and Nextdoor, the Digest and the Lowdown. And we should have a revised version of the FAQs, um, shortly as well for the Citizen Information Center Council and for web, for the website. And with that, um, does anyone have any questions?
Counselor.
Uh, yes, I've been getting questions about three things. If you want to plug them into the, you know, announcements for good news. One is, uh, people are surprised. You ask me, one of the utilities going underground on Boots Ferry Road, they're just so excited about that. So when you're ready, Katie, you might want to hit that one hard. The second one was Woodmont Park and the third one was Iron Mountain Park, just now that we've approved the contract, uh, the contracts, let's go. Once Ivan says they're going, doing something on the site, you may want to announce that because people are anxious to see that go.
Counselor Mans?
Mine's a little bit different. Um, someone, um, brought something up to me. They're in, um, uh, drug and alcohol counseling. And they said that they loved the graphic on the happy hour. Um, but that it appeared to be only alcohol related, small thing. I'm just repeating back what they, they said to me and I didn't even, that didn't even pass my radar. Um, I'm just passing it along because I told them that I would, you know, try to be cognizant that there's people out there that maybe HUs were triggered or trying to avoid alcohol at this point in time, but want to participate. Small thing, said I would do it. Now I've done it. Um, the other thing is, and this could be obviously for a later discussion. I've been hearing quite a bit from the business community that I talk to, um, what the plan is for a future opening. Not a date, but a framework, especially with the governor's, um, announcement of more of a framework. So, um, as we move forward, maybe keeping people apprised of where we're going with that might be useful, might not. And again, just passing information that I'm getting as I sit in my little gilded page here.
I actually think that one of the challenges that Katie and her team has is that we don't have any, uh, clear criteria. We have the topics that have to be covered for reopening to occur. But there isn't, uh, any kind of estimated timeline or estimated data that's been provided by the state about what are the actual, uh, milestones that have to be met before reopening can start. The other thing I just, uh, believe, and I think that Dale and Katie would probably both agree with me, that the reopening is going to come in phases. And so, uh, uh, and I would say that probably the things that are, um, I'm hoping that hairstylists will be among the first folks to be reopened. But that's a personal problem. We all agree on that, right?
You look fabulous.
Thank you. I'm starting to think I could go back to my eighties haircut, uh, the, the wings. Um, um, thank you for laughing. Um, but I think things like reopening elective surgeries, getting dentists reopenings, the folks, the things that are really actually causing, uh, quality of life decreases, uh, like, uh, to people's health, it'll probably be the first things that reopen. And so I know there's a lot of anxiety about getting things reopened, but I think we all need to be very patient. I do think that one of Katie's challenges is how do we continue the message when it's clear that folks are bored essentially and really want to go back to some level of normalcy.
And I totally appreciate that, as did the people who were mentioning this to me. I think it was more, we have a very educated and, um, up to date community. So they're asking questions. Thank you.
Counselor.
Uh, following up Counselor Mann's point about the happy hour, uh, we had some confusion in our neighborhood. I think the neighborhood chairs got the blast from parks or asked to blast it out. And our board here was saying it was a little unclear that it's just stay in your driveway at your sidewalk with your family. It wasn't, let's start partying again. And so they held off and didn't send it out because of that, the, the graphics, everything else is fine. It's just, it was a little unclear. We said, but this does not mean we're easing up the restrictions. It just means get out and cheer a little bit. That's all. But if we do it again, just let's put that in a big banner.
Sure. Thank you for the feedback. I'll, um, I'll pass that on to our parks team as well about the, the happy hour as well. Thanks.
Back. Andrew Bennett?
That's all we have unless there's anything that you all have, uh, that you have questions about or feedback on. I want to thank, uh, Dale and Katie and Scott for the work that they've done, uh, above and beyond and for, uh, doing this briefing today. So we'll, we'll also invite some folks to give you some feedback about how other things are going next week at your, at your.
Okay. Question, uh, information from council. Anybody have any information they need to share with us? That's a call off. You got unmute, you got unmute, Council Call.
There we go.
There you go. Good.
So apparently everybody from the state and metro and county and, uh, everybody else, uh, had the same sense that they had to spring out of their house because we had mass numbers of meetings this last week, all very successful over Zoom. And, uh, I'll be honest, everybody was joyful to see each other and talk. But we got a lot done and a couple of things I just wanted to mention. Uh, to some degree, it was as if we hadn't even had this disruption for a month. They were back talking about gas tax and how we were ever going to pay for the roads. Um, and, and bemoaning the fact that, uh, driving had gone so down that this was even more of a problem. Um, a fun factoid, however, was that everybody apparently got all Marie Kondo and the, uh, the waste transit stations were totally filled with people bringing their, their stuff. They all got into it. Um, the, uh, the other thing I wanted to tell you though, uh, in the short run, uh, was that Mitchell had come out with what's called the Unified Planning Work Program, which is about, as I recall, about a hundred and twenty pages and it can be PDFed off their site. And it literally tells you, uh, in one page what they're doing. So, uh, when you, uh, you won't be surprised, I haven't studied it thoroughly, but it looked very, uh, approachable. So the only other thing I would say is that the DEI, uh, task force will be re, um, energized. I got a call from, uh, Bill Dela Cruz, who is our facilitator. And, uh, over the next short while, we will have short, uh, excuse me, uh, smaller groups to get us back on the train. And what I liked to hear was he said he had already started approaching people and they were very excited. And so in the respect that, um, we now know what this feels like to be away from each other, uh, inability to give hugs. And we're, we're wanting to get back and start problem solving. So it was a good week. That was my report.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anything from the officers? Okay. Then we're going to go into executive session now. And this concludes, uh, cable TV broadcast portion of the city council meeting. And following executive session will, meaning come back and meet and, and probably just adjourn. And this part of, this part of the meeting, by the way, is going to be live streamed on YouTube. So take a break. We'll get, get going for executive session. Thank you, everybody.
We should do the announcement in the open session. Uh, the announcement of executive session should happen in the open proceeding. So at this point, we'll announce that the governing body will need an executive session pursuant to ORS 192.660 subsection 2D to conduct deliberations with persons who are designated to carry on labor negotiations. Designated staff will be allowed to attend the executive session. However, all other members of the audience will not have access to that executive session. No final decision will be made in that session. And as the mayor mentioned, at the end of the executive session, the city council will return to an open session, which can be accessed, uh, directly on the city's YouTube channel or through the link on the city website.
All right. Thank you very much, everybody.